I'd like to call the order of the meeting for the committee, the whole, for June 7, 2017. Would you rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
Let's lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Okay, number one on our agenda this evening, we're going to start with good news, as I promised you for this year. And tonight, we have a presentation to present to our fire chief, Richard Lengel.
I have before me a resolution recognizing Richard C. Lengel for 24 years of dedicated service to the borough of Pottstown. Whereas, Richard C. Lengel has served the borough of Pottstown as a dedicated employee since 1993, and whereas during his career with the borough, he served in the dual capacities of fire marshal and fire chief. And whereas for the past five years, Rich has served in the position of appointed fire chief, and during his career, he has been called to duty at various hours of the day and night, in all types of emergency response situations, in order for the community to receive the best level of fire safety possible and to save lives. And whereas Rich's presence at the Borough Hall will truly, will be truly missed by the people that have worked and served with him, now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the mayor and town council that Richard C. Lengel is officially recognized for the outstanding service he has provided the borough of Pottstown through 24 years of employment, and further that he is extended best wishes for a happy and well-deserved retirement. This is adopted at Pottstown Borough Hall, 100 East High Street, this 7th day of June, 2017. And before I present this, I would ask Borough Council for a motion to accept this resolution. Do I have a second?
Have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much for your service.
It's been a hell of a ride. More like a roller coaster. Lot of changes over the years, mostly good, a few troubling. We got through them. I've served with many councilors, several mayors, a half a dozen borough managers, all very fine to work with, all very supportive for the fire service in general. I've also, excuse me, I've also had the support of the fire officers within the fire department, and we've had many over the years, very dedicated volunteers. The career people within the department have done an excellent job over the years. Without them, we could not do the job that we do today. They're an integral part of the Pottstown Fire Department. That's why we call ourselves a combination department, not just a volunteer fire department. I had one goal when I took office, and that was to make sure that the borough got the best fire protection available with the resources available. I believe we've met that goal many times over, repeatedly with the incidents we've dealt with within the borough. And for that, I thank the members of the department, both career and volunteer, and the officers for their dedicated service and support of me for the 24 years. Thank you, and good night.
Okay, number four on the agenda is the Citizens Leadership Academy graduation. And before they come up, I'd like you to know that the efforts of Courtney, our leader, has earned the Pottstown Borough an award. The official magazine of the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs, the association recognition award is presented to Pottstown Borough in the 7,501st-plus population category, a third-place recognition. This is special recognition for Citizens Leadership Academy. Well done, Courtney. Come on up.
I am very pleased to announce that we have our third graduating class this evening of the Citizens Leadership Academy, which has been a very successful program. I actually had two participants this time who have, actually their second time taking the class, so. It was developed to enhance civic leadership and build a stronger community and sense of togetherness, and this class in particular has certainly done so. So, when I call your name, if you could please come forward. Theodore Connor. Oh, actually, Ted, if you could come back up, if everyone could just stay up here for a moment. Amy Durante. Obviously, she was the life of the party. Okay, if I could just have a round of applause for this class. And I don't know if anyone wanted to take a moment, maybe say what you are taking away from the experience?
Well, this has definitely been an incredible journey. When I first signed up for this class, it was on a whim, and I asked my mom if she wanted to join, and, well, that took a lot of convincing. And after the very first class, and meeting all these amazing, incredible people, we realized that it was one of the best decisions we made, and we're so glad we made it. We got a great group here, leaders, inspirational, funny. And I think we came together not only as a group, but almost as a family. You know, we talked together outside of the class, and we're already planning on meeting up, so, and we wanted to thank our illustrious, fearless leader, Courtney Hye.
It really has been a pleasure, and I look forward to seeing you all again. Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll have the presentation, pest honor guard members.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, Chief Drumheller is coming forward to tell us a little about, a little bit about the honor guard, and the history of it, and the function of it. And while he's preparing to do that, I'll call the names.
Why don't you step down, Mayor?
Step down? Okay. I'll step down.
The honor guard is a bunch of officers, men and women, that go out to grave sites, serve as pole bearers, and they do it on their own. They, under the guise of the Pottstown Police Department, they're the most dedicated officers in the department, and they serve at a moment's notice. They are willing to put down their own schedules, and what we did is we decided to honor those who are still with the department or the borough, and have been doing it for at least 10 years or more. So, what's an honor guard award without the honor guard? So, Sergeant Grimm, will you bring in the honor guard?
At this time, I'm going to call the names of those who are still active in our honor guard, having served a minimum of 10 years. And just first to acknowledge that Officer David Mull is not here this evening, but he will be receiving an award. When you hear your name, can you please come forward to the front to receive your plaque? Ronald Taylor. The other two officers are 10 years. Mark Flanders, 11 years. Robert Thomas, 10 years. Captain Thomas, can you please present our chief, Richard Drumheller, with his award for 10 years of service? Can I hear a hearty round of applause for our honor guard?
What a tough act to follow. Under Subcommittee Reports, Infrastructure.
No report.
No report.
No meeting.
No meeting. Economic Development.
Yeah, so, this month, we have several grants that have been awarded. So, we were awarded $80,000 for the construction of the King Street Pedestrian Crossing at the Carousel in Memorial Park. That was from Montgomery County. We were also awarded a grant from the PennDOT Bureau of Aviation for repaving of the Airport East apron and Tea Hangar taxiway. We also received a $10,000 mini grant award from the Health and Wellness Foundation DCNR for a riverfront park pavilion. And we've also received 1.2 million in our annual operating assistance as it relates to parks. So, a lot of, a lot of good news this month on, on the grant front. There's still a few out there that we're still waiting on. We will be holding our pre-construction meeting for the Royal Street Stormwater Improvement Project down near Washington, Royal Street and Industrial Highway in that area. So, construction should get underway soon. We're coordinating that construction with the construction that's happening for the Sloop River Trail as, as well. Happy to see that the sojourners were camping out in a riverfront park last night, so we heartily welcomed them with a live music performance. I think there were about, over 100 of them there, so that was really good to see that activity down at the park. I also want to send a shout-out to the partnership that, that is being formed by Benita, Paden, and Hobart's Run to conduct a series of events downtown. So, Hobart's Run is leading up efforts for a midday cafe. There was one today, from 11 to 1 o'clock. And then last Friday, Fun Fridays was sponsored at the back of New York Plaza with cafe food, just kind of a meet and greet, and an opportunity for people to come into town and really get to see some of the hidden gems that we have here in Pottstown, and kind of showcase them a little bit, to try to generate more, more interest and more visitors downtown. So, thanks for that, for that partnership as well. I also wanted to pull up our website to show everyone the new link that we, that we have for the Pottstownfamilies.org community event calendar. This is a community event calendar that basically conglomerates a bunch of different events, not just in Pottstown, but throughout the region as a whole. So, on the left here, if you go under this tab, there's a Borough Calendar and Event Calendar. If you click on the, on the Event Calendar, it will direct you to Pottstownfamilies.org. So, here, you can, you can see all the events that are going on in, in June and, and the next few upcoming months. So, as you can see, there's no shortage of things to do in Pottstown and in the Pottstown greater area. We post most of our park and recreation events on here, and I know a lot of the other organizations, nonprofits, school district, they post a lot of their events that they're, that they're having as well. So, this is really your one-stop shop for where to find out about things to do in Pottstown. There you have it.
Very good. Transportation, Councilor Kulp.
No meeting.
Right. Ricketts Community Center. Councilor Kirkland is not here. Have you anything, Rita? Anything on that? Okay. Okay, the, the report's in the packet and no addition. He is Pottstown School Board. Mr. Heidel? Not here. Mr. Williams, can you stand in? You should at least brag about the meeting that Mr. Rodriguez held on school fair funding. He, he did a phenomenal job.
...in the Grand Ole Press Conference and Superintendent of Pennsylvania, to discuss the public school dilemma right now with the legislating of...
Could you use the microphone?
Sure. Okay, you got me.
You're welcome.
A few weeks ago, a number of, of folks from the school district, Mr. Rodriguez, myself, we had two other board members and two students visited Harrisburg to speak to our legislators, and actually legislators from other areas, to talk about the, the crises that we feel is, is happening in public schools, and in our school district in particular. At that point in time, I think that we had one really fantastic student who was able to relate how different the world looks to a student. She had come from Souderton School District to Pottstown School District. An incredible young lady, and she related the fact that, that in Souderton, she was on an AP program and had, had taken some advanced Spanish classes. Coming here to Pottstown, you know, we only offer up to a certain level of Spanish classes, and that's, that's the only language class that we offer. She wasn't able to take her advanced third level of Spanish because we didn't offer it, and simply had a problem. So, just the simple fact that the inequity in, in distribution of funds in, in public education would create that kind of a situation, that's just a simple example of, of what we're facing. As the third, I believe the third highest taxed community, a school board in, in the state of Pennsylvania, it's incredible that we can live in, in the wealthiest county in the, in the state, and almost insulting that, that we have to look to our property taxes, which are the highest, you know, amongst the highest, to supplement the kinds of things just to offer a basic offering in the education. So, we went on that tour, I think the folks we talked to were very impressed and had, you know, enlightened us to the fact that their numbers just aren't capable of passing the kind of legislation that we need to create a fair funding circumstance, you know. Later on, we had a, an event down at the high school last week, where we, we brought a number of folks together to discuss why property taxes in Pennsylvania are, are, are distributed the way they are. And we had a very large attendance at that, at that session. I think we walked away, I think Tim Hennessy, Governor, Governor, Mr. Hennessy, our congressman, was at that meeting, and so were a number of folks from educational institutions who elaborated quite well on, on the dilemma that we're in. We had a very large group of folks show up for that, for that event, hopefully to understand, to get an appreciation of why our property taxes are, are, are working so hard to sustain what is, what is one of the most complicated education systems in the country. And then we have the press conference the following day, which, which just kind of reiterated what we were talking about. It's a serious situation. We are, we are fighting for the life of public education throughout the country, actually, but in Pennsylvania, it's, we are probably at the bottom of, of the barrel. We, we have nowhere to go for, for the resources that we need to, to support what we need to do. There's a campaign going, taking place. I believe a number of you were distributed some information. Going to Harrisburg is, is, is a good thing. Letting our legislators know, you know, the problem is a good thing. The problem is, is that our legislators know. There's, there, there, both Mr. Quigley, Mr. Hennessy, and Senator Mensch, they are all aware of what needs to be done, but to support what, what needs to be done, they need to be able to pull in numbers from other places. So, the efforts that we're looking for moving forward are statewide efforts. We need to convince folks in some of the wealthier districts, folks who, who live in districts where, where they, they benefit a lot from the kind of funding that's distributed. We need to convince those folks to support the idea of, of creating a more equitable distribution of funds, so that we can take the load, the property tax load, and create a relief from that. Legislation isn't there right now. The legislation is actually working in the other direction, and it's a shame.
Thank you very much. F, the ad hoc zoning, Councilor Poskels.
Kind of a special meeting where he extended an invitation to local artists, and actually it was very well-attended. Quite a few did show up to kind of, you know, address their concerns of regulating murals and signs, and actually went pretty well, coming closer to an agreement.
Very good. Animal Committee. Mr. Miller.
I just want to remind rescue groups that are out there doing TNR programs to ensure that there is a responsible caregiver on the other end of that. The cats deserve it, and it's very important. So, you know, the borough of Pottstown is very supportive of, of protecting our community kitties. On the other hand of that, we expect some accountability and some responsibility for that. Pottstown Paws, I know where those cats are. I have an open line of communication with Montgomery County SPCA, with the Pottstown Police Department, with the animal control. I would encourage all the other rescue groups in the area to please open up those lines of communications as well. Thank you.
Safety, Chief Drumheller.
Just one thing I would like to talk about today is, at the request of Borough Manager Flanders and the Safety Committee, we put together a small committee on parking. We are working on issues with the downtown. We are working on issues of signage, locations, and everything. The committee met today for the first time today, was basically just a, a, kind of a meet and greet, where we talked about some of the issues at hand, but we're going to begin a process of reviewing everything. We're also going to take a look at what other communities are doing, and what we could make better. And, like, one of them, key right off the bat is signage. So, we're going to work on that, and we'll report back to you later.
Very good.
Chief, can I ask you one question? This is in regards to calls I've received on people who now are terrified to go to the post office. I think that we can reassure them indeed by knowing that the post office is a federal building with cameras inside and out. And could you just review a little for people that might have missed that in the mercury about what happened at the post office? That they shouldn't be afraid to go to the post office?
Yeah, the, there was, there was some action at the post office where someone actually robbed somebody in the post office. And they went inside with the intention of robbing the post office, but they didn't get what they want, and they stopped on the way out and robbed somebody else. So, with that said, we've been in touch with the federal government who monitors all that, and we have our detectives working on that. So, crime does happen. I'm not going to, I'm not going to deny it doesn't, and nobody likes to be a victim of a crime. But to think that that should then... But to think that that should then mean you should never go to the post office, if that's your thought pattern, then you probably won't go a lot of places in the United States where crime happens. So I can't guarantee their safety, but I can assure you it's safe to go in the post office.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seven is the part operating budget. We have the notes as part of our agenda. Anything to add? Okay.
You have the part operating budget in your packets
Yes.
for fiscal year 1718, which will start on July 1st. We have received the state grant funding. The federal funding is still pending. Our revenue projected is lower than what was projected for the current year. However, it's much more realistic with the trends that we're seeing. And overall, this budget is about a 1% increase over the current year. So we are really holding costs down as much as possible. And you'll also see that at this point, we are showing a shortage. That is because we are currently still in the shelter project, the replacement of all of the bus shelters. Once that is completed, we'll receive the reimbursement for that funding.
Oh, okay.
Any questions?
So do you have numbers on ridership? Is it increasing?
No, it's not. Ridership is actually down this year. We've seen a real uptick in the usage of power transit services, which is the door-to-door services for those who are disabled.
Okay.
Ridership is down, but costs are going up?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, your report.
Thank you, President Wayne. I'd just like to make a further comment about safety in the community and in particular cyber safety and in real particular, Facebook. I'd just like to mention to those who are viewing that at all ages that engage in Facebook, the vulnerability that exists due to hackers, the vulnerability that exists due to the First Amendment free speech, your right to free speech does not prevent you from the consequences of the free speech that you use. And I'm just encouraging everyone that uses Facebook or the Internet for any type of communication to keep it as positive and truthful as possible and to think first before you type something. Is it kind? Is it necessary? Is it going to hurt someone's feelings? Is it inflammatory? Is it unethical? Is it illegal? Be very sure that Facebook is not a bubble where there is not other eyes from every level of government that find something to hold on to, to track. So it is a distinct tracking tool. I know a lot of people use it for recreation, keeping in touch with family, updates, a lot of good purposes. But there are also arrests that have been made through things that have been communicated on Facebook. And so as we are all sensitive to rising crime in general in the nation, that we can, as the public, work together with our fellow human beings on these social media sites and make them softer and more pleasant and less prone to interventions by authorities. I just wanted to mention that. Your safety on the Internet is important, but each individual is responsible to govern their behavior and the things they say. Even in a free speech environment, there could be consequences that you may not have bargained for. So just please be careful. I'd like to mention about the Memorial Day Parade. And with the looming threat of rain and the unfortunate conditions that the Clydesdale horses could not be hitched up, it was a wonderful event. And to me, it felt just like the Fourth of July. You know, it's different focus, why we're there and what we're celebrating. But for the community to come out and to just be so enamored, to see the horses, even though they were still in, you know, they weren't hitched up and they couldn't see their, all of them. It was a wonderful day. And I heard that Pottstown was one of the communities that did not cancel their parade. So there's a lot to be said in that for the tenacity of people to come out and remember those who have sown their lives for the freedoms that we enjoy. The next thing I'd just like to announce links us somewhat as a community with many people who are repeat visitors. They're contributing to recidivism in our community, which means that these are particularly women that I'm talking about right now that have been in and out of incarceration for one reason or another. And on this Saturday, from 10:00 to 2:00, Patricia Fleming of Liberty Ministries is coming to have a program called "A Crown of Beauty for Ashes." I will not be able to attend that program, but I would like everyone to know that I am in full support of all positive endeavors that are ongoing to allow people, women in particular in this case, to regain their sobriety, whether their sobriety is caused by turnstiles of domestic violence, whether their sobriety needs to be restored from drug addiction, whether it's the opioid crisis or prescription drugs per se, whatever has made them get off the wheel of their responsibility to have a normal quality of life. I would just like to ask everyone who knows someone who's struggling in addiction, particularly a woman. There is a program going on Saturday at 238 East High Street at Connections on High. They already have 90, 90 women who have RSVP'd. These are all, some ex-offenders. So there will be some that are also interested in being involved in motivating and redirecting these women. And I would just like to applaud the effort. Even though I won't be there, I'm usually behind the scenes on a few women that are in recovery and transforming their lives with their help. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Flanders, the manager's report.
Thank you, Ms. Wayne. I want to remind Borough Council that our utility staff will be conducting tours of both our water and sewer treatment plants over the next two weekends. The water treatment plant tour is this Saturday, June 10th, at 9:00 a.m. And the wastewater treatment plant is next Saturday, the 17th, at 9 o'clock a.m. as well. If any of you are planning on attending, please let Ginny know so that she can add your name to the list. In case you didn't see it, the Montgomery County Commissioners will be hosting another conversation with the Commissioners Event here in the borough. That event will be held next Tuesday, June 13th, at 7:00 p.m. at South Hall in the community room at the community college. Please remember that the next joint meeting of Borough Council and the school board will be held on Tuesday, June 20th, at 7:00 p.m. And the location will be the boardroom at Pottstown Memorial Medical Center. And last but not least, in regard to vacancies, again in July, I believe I mentioned this last month, there'll be one six-year term on the Civil Service Commission up for reappointment. And in August, there will be one three-year term on the Code Board of Appeals. And also in August, two three-year terms on the EAC. All these have been posted on the website for at least a month already.
Okay, thank you. Number 10 is the Fire Marshal Appointment.
Council may recall that we made a conditional offer of employment for the position of Fire Marshal to Donald Steitler. After a rather lengthy pre-screening process, we were able to make a final offer to Mr. Steitler. He has accepted it and will be on board Monday as our new Fire Marshal. It will require, in order for him to be able to do his job, it will require Council to make a formal appointment. And I would ask that you do that on Monday evening. He will be here.
Very good.
He's not here with us tonight?
He's not here with us tonight.
Okay, we'll list that for Monday. And the presentation, ACTIO, 860 Cross Street.
So ACTIO, the real estate representative for the BASF company, was not able to make it tonight. If you recall, back in April, I come to Council and explained the use violation that we have in Memorial Park for uses that are not recreational in nature. We need to find land to offset that land. And we happen to have the opportunity right now to possibly acquire via donation a property at 860 Cross Street. Where we left it was we left and asked the owner's representative to provide us more information on the level of environmental contamination at that site. So you have a memo that was prepared by the BASF company explaining some of the environmental contaminants on the site. We are still looking for more information on the contaminants. We're looking for the specifics of the Phase 1 and 2 environmental studies that were done by a certified environmental firm. We want to see the actual copies of those reports. And we want to see the remediation plan that is actually approved by DEP. We expect to get that. They just have to take some more time to find, to locate that, the firm that originally prepared it and find those reports and then get somebody, an environmental person out here that can speak to us in depth about some of the questions we may have on this property. Basically, to summarize, there are two categories of environmental contaminants that were found on the site. The first one is trichloroethylene, or TCE. And this is a chemical that was most likely found in industrial solvents. Currently on this site, it is in the soil and the groundwater. And at the levels that it was found at, it's regulated by the PADEP. The second thing that was found was a polychlorinated biphenol PCB in the soil. That's under the jurisdiction of the EPA. PCBs are typically associated with sealants, caulk, adhesives. That's what the company made. It was formally operating out of that site. So the TCE is both in the soil and in the groundwater. It's primarily located in the southwestern and southeastern portions of the site. So if you envision it, that is the portion of the site that is next to the railroad. It's present in both the shallow groundwater and the bedrock groundwater. So unless that site is capped, those contaminants are going to continue to leach into the shallow and bedrock groundwater. So it's really probably best that somebody does take and cap that site so that we can at least stop that from occurring. The PCBs are in the shallow portions of the soil at 0 feet to 4.5 feet. The concentration is greater than 50 milligrams per kilogram. These are also primarily located along the southern perimeter of the property, along the railroad tracks. It does extend off the property for some portion. They're proposing to remove a certain portion of that soil and then place a two-foot-thick soil cover over that area and vegetate it and then dispose of the excavated material in an approved facility. So that's basically the summary of what I have from them. We hope to get them here next month to answer any other additional questions that you may have. We also expect to receive the Phase 1 and 2 environmental reports. And we're also going to have a certified land appraiser go out to the properties that we want to swap to make sure that the properties that we want to swap in Memorial Park are of equivalent value to the property that we would gain. So that's a DCNR requirement that we would need in order to move forward at this point.
Is that a matter of value or just square footage?
It's a matter of value. So my thought is that we're probably, it's really a procedural thing. We're probably in very good shape. For one thing, the property that we're looking to acquire is going to be larger than the offset that we need to have there. And then the second thing is that this is an industrial and commercially zoned property, whereas the property that we need to offset is a park, which really doesn't have a lot of value. So we should have a lot more value in the land that we're acquiring based on those two factors.
Very good. Any questions?
Are they going to give you information so they can kind of come up with some recommendation? Or at least have the information so they can review it?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why we couldn't provide that to them for review. Wouldn't hurt.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you be staying for the airport's open house?
I will not. I will be turning it over to the fixed base operator, James Rulier. He's here with us tonight to talk about an event that he wants to run at the airport on September 30th.
Very good.
So I'll let him provide the details on that.
Oh, there he is.
So what we're kind of thinking is this year, we want to have a bigger open house event. Instead of having multiple events or anything like that, we want to have one big kind of community event. So we'd like to work closely with Sly Fox during their Can Jam and have the same day, September 30th. Kind of thinking, you know, a lot of people are going to come for that. Why not have the airport open at the same time, having an event where everybody can see the airplanes, go for airplane rides and stuff like that? We're also going to work closely with Eastwood and a bunch of other local companies to also be on display at the same time. Car clubs will be there. Medical helicopters will be there. Our airplanes will be there. Our charter airplanes will be there. Just kind of having like a big style open house for everybody. So just kind of looking for permission to start really rolling forward with that. And then, yeah, any questions anybody has?
First question would be, how do you get the people from one event to the other? Is it strictly by foot?
Yeah, strictly by foot. It is probably, still working out the logistical side of that. Obviously, we have a lot of parking at the airport that's available, both on the grass and in the parking lot, which would be open also. And then kind of create like a corridor down the road somehow through the grass for people to walk from one area to the other. Obviously, you'd have to work with the fire police and everybody else to kind of figure out a safe way to make that work. But I think it's possible with a little bit of planning.
And the airport's open for takeoffs and landings during that event?
Absolutely, absolutely, yep. We'll be doing discovery flights, demo flights, showing the bigger airplanes that we have, the smaller airplanes. Just kind of opening it up for everybody. The maintenance shop will be open. We'll have a couple of project airplanes that we're building on display for everybody. So everybody can kind of see what it looks like when the airplane's in pieces and what it looks like, you know, as a final product.
If there are no more questions, we'll list that for Monday evening.
Thank you guys very much.
I am guessing it's Mr. Lenhart's turn. Tell us about InFocus.
All right, good evening. I shall keep this quick because I know there's a lot on the agenda today. The purpose of this presentation is to inform you a bit about the Pottstown InFocus Film Festival so that you're knowledgeable of it, so that you can advocate for it and find folks to fulfill some of the volunteer positions we're looking for, as well as let folks know about the possibility of entering. So again, this is something we're very much excited about. It's going into its second year, the Pottstown InFocus Short Film Festival. So it is sponsored by Pottstown Parks and Recreation Department, working with Virtual Farm Creative and the Pottstown Parks and Recreation Foundation Incorporated, which, as I always mention, we work with, but we are not the same organization. We recently picked up the primary sponsor for this year's festival and that is Cedarville Engineering. They really stepped up. They made a big donation to make sure that this can happen. So we would like to thank them and acknowledge them as the Pottstown InFocus Short Film Festival 2017, brought to you by Cedarville Engineering. Please always refer to it as such. Please always refer to it as such. So, this is an online submission film festival. It's a live screening event also. So, this isn't just an online event. This is an online and a live screening event. This is important to distinguish us because there is a difference between those, and this is definitely the more prestigious of the two designations, and we are fulfilling that. Entries need to be 30 minutes or less. Registration was open as of May 1st, and we do have our first entry already, so we're proud to say that. Screening of new entries will occur at some events held the 9th, 10th, and 11th of November. So, we will be taking submissions in advance of the screening events which will happen in November. Lead-in events will be using the 2016 material, and those dates will be determined for this summer. We're also proud to note that we have 3,000-plus in awards scheduled for this year. A little bit of a background in history, the 2016 was made possible through a grant from the Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation to the Pottstown Parks and Recreation Foundation Incorporated. We had 35-plus entries. The entry criteria for 2016 was restricted to Pottstown-centric themes and settings only. For 2016, we had five nights of events, and the partners for that one also included Virtual Farm Creative, Hill School, Steel River Playhouse, Montgomery County Community College, Connections on High, and of course, Pottstown Parks and Recreation Department. We have a lot of the same players returning this year. They have remained committed, so that speaks well to 2016 and well to what we're going for in 2017. The events were held, as you can see, between June 6th and 10th, so just about a year ago today. They were a pretty good success for us, although we noted that we took it down from five events to three. It's a little more easy for us to work with. What we have accomplished with 2016 is we've established the brand, we've established the website, we've established the terms and conditions, we've established the initial judging mechanics, which we are open to refining, but this is a lot of legwork that has already been completed and going into 2017, we have already completed. And we've generated material to be screened in advance of 2017. This is one of the things to note, is that when we run this festival, we come away with a body of work that we can continue to work with. So, those 35 entries that we have last year, we still have, we can use those as lead-in screening events, and you can view those on the current Pottstown InFocus website. This is the current Pottstown InFocus website. You'll see we have the header here coming November 9th to 11th, and you have our categories noted there: comedy, fiction, science fiction, music, video, and documentary slash nonfiction. These are the categories into which you can enter your films. Our special category this year, again, is a love letter to Pottstown. A little bit more on that later. And you'll notice we also have the 2016 winners noted. You can still link to that material. You can look at that material, see an example of the quality of work that we've been able to pull in with this program. So, what's new for 2017, what we have for this year, is that we've changed the subject criterion, opened it to all topics, so it does not just need to be about Pottstown or tie to Pottstown in some way. The Pottstown elements we want there to be present will be informed by the Superior Awards Schedule. So, we have two awards that are being offered. These are the highest price tag awards, and we hope that those will inform the entries so we have a body of work that still puts Pottstown at the center while not limiting the creativity of those that we're trying to attract to this event. Those two major awards are a love letter to Pottstown. Again, that places Pottstown at the center of the theme. And Pottstown on Location, we're really excited about this one. This will be for the entry that films in the greater Pottstown metropolitan region. So, it's going to be featuring our locality, both in Pottstown and in our neighbors that participate with us in the Regional Rec Committee. We have started an entry fee system this year. This is in an effort to be physically responsible, of course. You'll see your first entry fee is 30. If you want to put in a second entry, we discount that second entry. Filmmakers are encouraged to make as many entries as they would like, as long as it's only one per genre category. So, if you're counting, you can enter up to five different films. That would be one in each of the genre categories. The refined award schedule is shown here. You see we're awarding first and second place in each of those genre categories, and the special awards are for Best Picture, Best Filmmaker 18 and Under, Pottstown on Location, and a Love Letter to Pottstown. I'd like to note, for those of you that are paying attention with respect to thinking about entries, that means the maximum award that you could walk away from this is likely to be, let's see, that would be, yeah, $750. Sorry, I had to do my math in my head there quick. With the assumption that the most likely, if you're going to take home the Best Picture, you've probably already taken home first place in your genre category. So, the awards do stack with respect to that. It is a prestigious award to have a first place, as well as a Best Picture in this type of event. So, what's happening for 2017, these are the events that we have scheduled November 9th, this opening night. It's going to be at Montgomery County Community College. We're going to have some screenings. Sly Fox Beer is participating. November 10th, we're going to have a screening and a speaker at the Hill School. This was a big success for us last year, so we wanted to do this again, screen some entries that we think will likely be taking home awards. Last year, we were fortunate enough to have local actor Darrell McCray come back and speak to us at the Hill School. We're looking to have a similar speaker this year, somebody who's in the industry. We have a lot of ties to Pottstown, more than you would think. And November 11th, again, the awards ceremony. This was a big hit last year. Steel River Playhouse has given us the venue once again. We're proud to say we're working with them. This will be a ticket event with sponsors, filmmakers, and volunteers invited. There will be an opportunity for the public to participate as well. So, what's next? We need to assemble judging panels and refine the process and criteria for judging. This is a call to folks in the community and the greater region that have knowledge and interest towards participating in this judging process. It is a bit of a responsibility. You could be looking at, you know, 10 to 15 entries. That's a lot of film, but we need you. We need you to come to us and help us to run this event. We need to continue soliciting sponsorships and raise funds. We are still taking sponsorships. There's ample opportunity to be recognized for contributing to this, contributing to this, rather. We have an online interface, and you will be prominently displayed. We need to market locally and market regionally, let folks know that they can participate, come out to these events, and give us entries. And we need to plan, schedule, execute summer events, as well as assist with the execution of November events. For fundraising, just a few notes here. We've had good success so far. We estimate about $10,000 is needed to run the event top to bottom. We have received 4,600 so far, so we are well on schedule towards meeting our goals with Cedarville Engineering being our primary sponsor. For marketing, this is a big important one. We need to let folks know that we are out there. They can find us at PottstownInFocus.org and see that this is a great venue for their creative efforts. So, we need to find these filmmaking communities and market to them, let them know that they are stakeholders in Pottstown. And of course, the judging panels. You can expect to view up to about two hours of film possibly, with these films being 30 minutes in length. The average one is about 10 to 15 minutes. November, of course, we're looking for volunteers to help us actually run these events. We're specifically looking for some Ramp certified volunteers to help us out on 11-9, and that is, of course, pending approval of Montgomery County Community College, which we're waiting for. And we will be working with the Pottstown Parks and Recreation Department. We are the ones that are running the event wing of this with the Pottstown Parks and Recreation Foundation Incorporated, providing the clerical support and running the grants and monies. So, that's it. Thank you for your time. If you are interested in more information on the Pottstown InFocus Film Festival, please visit us at PottstownInFocus.com. Look us up on Facebook, the Pottstown InFocus Short Film Festival, and feel free to ask me any questions. There is some material up here that you can take home with you. Thank you very much for your time. Hope I didn't take up too much of it.
Thank you. Okay, 14 is Pottstown Veterans Community Day.
So, Parks and Recreation, Michael, has requested that Borough Council, our Parks and Recreation Department will be sponsoring the Second Annual Pottstown Veterans Community Day on September 23rd, and they're asking for your permission to hold a beer garden on the island at Memorial Park as part of this event. The event would be from, or the beer garden would be from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Michael, I would like to ask you, why is it 10 days and I have another day?
I think that we had that date before you chose that particular date, but we had to stick with that one because that was the availability of Sly Fox Brewery. They have agreed to sponsor a portion of the Veterans Event this year by running a mini component of their popular Can Jam tournament. So, that was the date that they had available. But I don't see any reason why we can't figure out a way to get folks to and from both. You and I should talk afterwards.
Okay, and we have to move on, and so we'll list that for Monday evening. 15 is Pennsylvania Municipal League Membership.
This was, if you recall, last month, we had a presentation from the Municipal League. We're able to secure, I believe, in your packets were the costs for membership to the Municipal League, and a decision should be made whether, or we should have a direction whether or not council desires to have this figured into next year's budget or not.
I have a question because it would be a five-year lock-in if we went with the PML?
That's correct.
So, we have six years on here. If we started in 2018, would we get 2018 with the fee waived and then this go down for the next five years?
I believe so.
Okay. Now, I understand the cost is always a concern for everybody. I just want to make, so you guys understand, the Pennsylvania Municipal League is a league of cities, which is very different than the Borough's Association, in which they deal with a lot of the, being an urban environment that we are, they deal with a lot of the same challenges and problems that we have. And you're also more exposed to people that are overcoming those challenges with new ideas, new, you'd meet a whole host of other people that you haven't met yet, working with different municipalities, city municipalities, but that would actually take some interaction from council. So, if some of these meetings are held in larger areas, their annual is in Erie, Pennsylvania. So, you know, if it's something that you're interested in, you're interested in working with people that do face the same challenges that we do here in the Borough of Pottstown. I think this would be a very positive thing to consider. Plus, they also advocate, they have a lot of advocacy in Harrisburg, which we currently do not have our own voice.
I think we heard our own voice somewhat earlier through Mr. Williamson's school board.
With school taxes?
Well, there's other issues.
Any other comments?
And also, there's the $8,000 that you have to put in, right?
Well, not at the end. What's the Borough's Association costing us?
I believe the, when you figure in the Borough's Association and the ICMA, we're spending in the area of, I believe Janice said it was 3,500 or 3,800 a year. So, just for council's edification, I reached out to some of my peers, and they shared that the Municipal League probably is the strongest in government representative as far as advocating and lobbying on behalf of municipalities. Also, my peers pointed out that, other than the lobbying efforts, it's really comparable to the benefits we receive from the Pennsylvania Borough's Association, and as far as management, training, and that type of stuff, neither compares to ICMA, so.
I would suggest a cutting of, not taking on more expense and cutting the expense of the Borough Association, because I don't really see a benefit. I think there's more of a benefit to building relationships with people in other cities or places where our challenges are similar, and having those relationships then build the bridge to the advocacy by voice, by interaction and engagement. And this is like hiring somebody to be your voice, or depending on the affiliation with either/or to make an impact. When, I believe that that's why we're all here, in essence. So, there should be better bridging between and among everyone here and possibly even with your citizens groups to go to these other places where there are urban problems, such as Reading, which is very close, Philadelphia, so a little bit farther, but there's nothing that stops from stepping into their community engagement pools, which has been done.
Right.
So, I'm just saying, you could save $1,100, in essence, by not signing on to the Municipal League and cutting the Borough Association.
$1,100?
$1,000. $1,000.
Okay. And this group is going to advocate on behalf of us, whether we're a member or not?
What's, what group is going to advocate for?
PML.
Well, I mean, I, right now, I use my voice through Norristown, who is a member of the PML. So, I can get my voice to Harrisburg through Norristown. But I am one voice, and unless others are going to join in those collaborations and partnerships, again, I am still only one voice.
Okay.
There's more voices that are advocating. It's just not, you know, out in the public venue per se until the impact is closer than just a discussion. So, I can't just say in a pigeonhole way that others are not having conversations.
Well, we'll list it for Monday evening and make a decision. 16, Allegheny East requesting a closure of High Street, June 25th.
See, Allegheny East Conference of Seventh Day at Venice are hosting a community fair at Smith Family Plaza and would, on Sunday, June 25th, between 1:00 and 4:00, and they would like to use the use of High Street. There's going to be a lot of children involved. They would like to create a romp and play area on High Street between York and Hanover and are asking us to authorize the blocking of traffic from 12:00 noon to 5:00 p.m. on June 25th.
And this is equivalent to last year's event?
Yes. And it is also a Sunday.
Okay, we'll list that for Monday evening.
Mr. President, can I say something about this?
Sure.
This is the second year for the Allegheny East Seventh Day at Venice to offer this as an outreach to Pottstown during their very successful and expansive camp meeting, which is not only local, but is an international event involving tens of thousands of members worldwide. So, we're glad that, once again, the community invited them. The Borough has been very, you know, receptive again to have this, and I was excited to find out that they found a 20-foot colon. So, if you have interest in walking through a 20-foot colon to see the healthy colon and what happens to damaged by food, that is going to be something that's cameoed at that event.
Is it a place that I could go with that?
I'm a scientist. I think it's intriguing.
That will not be set up next to the food fair.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, and we'll list that for Monday. 17 is Portonoff Agreement.
Mr. Honor? Sure, I think council knows that for a number of years, we've had Portonoff Law Associates work for us on behalf of collecting delinquent municipal assessments. The contract is based on an annual contract expiring the end of June, and council wants to continue that relationship. We need to vote to pass or approve the addendum to allow that to continue for another year.
So, this is nothing more than a continuation?
Correct.
Okay. Good, we'll list that for Monday. 18, Carousel of Flavor.
The Carousel of Flavor this year will be held on Sunday, September 24th, and they are requesting, again, permission to close High Street from 9:00 a.m. to approximately 6:00 p.m. for the event. They also would like council's permission to have a beer garden and wine garden tent located during the event.
Okay. Any comment? We'll list that for Monday. 19, Appointment of Zoning Officer.
So, you may be aware that Maria Blile, our zoning officer, has retired or is in the process of retirement. We need to appoint someone as a zoning officer, and we are recommending that our Director of Licensing and Inspections, Keith Place, be appointed the zoning officer.
Okay. Any comment? We'll list that for Monday.
Okay, sorry, let me just go back one second. Is this just a temporary assignment or a permanent?
Temporary.
Is there a reason we can't make this a permanent assignment?
The workload would not, would preclude Mr. Place from doing his job as a full-time department head in Licensing and Inspections.
What if there was some additional help available for him rather than adding another full-time salary to the Borough? Because he's fully certified, he's very capable of doing it, and it would make sense to have somebody, it would make sense to have somebody like Keith Place in that position.
Certainly open to discussion.
Is this a zoning officer union? Is this a union?
No.
Okay.
Just so everybody's clear, under the municipality's planning code, the zoning officer is the designated person who makes interpretations with respect to our zoning ordinance. Again, it can be anyone that you deem qualified to make interpretations of the zoning ordinance. You can have a zoning officer, you can have an assistant zoning officer. I'm not able to comment on the workload or the job responsibilities, but we need that position because someone needs to be able to make that formal determination, whether a zoning variance is needed or whether whatever is proposed complies with the zoning ordinance. So, at some point, council always makes the decision, and... decision, and if you make the decision, it's Mr. Place. On Monday, three months from now, you can decide it should be someone else. But we just need council to act so that position is filled. So, all the questions are valid questions, and I'm not sure we're able to answer them at this point.
Right.
But you can always change or undo what you do, but we need the position filled.
I'd like to ask a question regarding, considering people that have served on the zoning hearing board, to be able to be considered as applicants, is that a relevant utility of knowledge base, per se?
The only thing I'll say is, this typically is an employee of the Borough. It's not a volunteer position.
Right.
So, again, depending on the job description and how you would describe the duties, it could be included in some other capacity. So, you have a certain job, and in addition to that, you are also the zoning officer. But that's up to Borough staff and administration to deal with.
But we do need to appoint someone to fulfill our obligation.
Yes.
I'm correct. I don't think Cheryl or I are trying to say we need to get rid of, we understand needs to be filled. We're trying to, through attrition, save the Borough some money.
And consolidate the position. And I agree that that's a very important position, and why not have somebody in there that's fully qualified to make interpretations of the zoning law, especially our zoning laws.
But we do need to have someone in place.
We understand.
So, one has nothing to do with the other, but I hear, we'll have a discussion on that topic.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll list that for Monday. 20, All City Management. This is a renewal of an agreement?
So, as you recall, we have a agreement with All City Management Services for crossing guard services here in the Borough. The contract, the agreement states that we have the option to renew the contract for four additional one-year terms. This agreement will come to rest on June the 30th of this year, unless we renew it for an additional term. And Chief, I had asked you to check, the terms are the same going into next year?
The terms are the same.
I also checked to find out that the police department did not sponsor one crossing last year, that they covered everything themselves.
Very good. So, it will be under the same terms and conditions as 2017?
Did we talk to the school district, and they were satisfied with the service as well?
Yes, they were satisfied with the school district. The school district was satisfied with the services that they provided.
And the cost isn't changing in the contract price?
Terms and conditions will stay the same.
Okay, we'll list this one for Monday. 21, Comcast Cable Franchise Agreement Renewal.
Yes, I think council has in their packet a letter from Comcast from April. Basically, this is a standard letter that is required under the Cable Act when we approach the 36-month window for our existing cable franchise to expire. Comcast sends the letter as a sort of a kickoff to begin negotiations for a new franchise agreement. By doing this, they protect themselves, so that the Borough doesn't unilaterally cancel the franchise agreement during negotiations, which we wouldn't do anyway. But in any event, that starts the ball rolling, and at some point, we can discuss how we negotiate with Comcast a new franchise agreement. Again, there's no time sensitivity or urgency, since we're just within the three-year window of the expiration. But we wanted to bring it to your attention.
All right. No action is needed?
Uh, no.
And while you're on this, and it's relevant but a little irrelevant, Chuck, can you just talk a little bit about the community's concerns that some of the community believes that Comcast has a monopoly here in the Borough Potstown, and that's just not the case? And could you, could you explain that a little bit further?
Sure. All of cable franchise agreements are non-exclusive, so that means that anyone that's qualified to provide cable service would be welcome in the Borough. They would have to sign a franchise agreement, and they certainly would have to demonstrate that they are physically capable of providing comparable service to cable companies. But certainly, we welcome competition, and any investor like Verizon that wish to come in, we would certainly negotiate with them and come up with a cable franchise agreement. This is not an exclusive deal with Comcast. So, I hope that answers your inquiries, and happy to answer any other questions.
Previously, Verizon Fios has chosen not to come into the Borough. Mark, you are reaching out to them currently, once again?
That is correct.
And maybe I can just clarify, and this goes back probably eight or nine years. There had been some negotiations with Verizon at the time to have a cable franchise agreement with the Borough. I think we were very close to entering into a cable franchise agreement. That would require significant investment by Verizon into the Borough, so Fios, or whatever the service that they had, would be provided and available to all residents. At the time, when we were getting very close to an agreement, it was Verizon that made the choice that they did not wish to continue, were not prepared to make the investment in the Borough, not prepared to move ahead with a cable franchise agreement. At the time, I think Mr. Lopez was the manager.
Right.
And I believe that the, we left it that when they were ready to come back to service the Borough, they would be in touch with us. Unfortunately, there is nothing we can do to compel them to provide service. This is really up to them. So, when their business model or business plan shows that they're ready to come here, we will certainly welcome them in negotiating good faith like we would any other qualified cable service provider. So, we certainly would look forward to trying to contact them, but it's really up to them when they want to come to speak with us.
Okay. We'll, we'll list that for Monday.
Okay.
Okay. 22, Parking Agreement at 260 High Street.
Chuck, was there any action to be taken on that?
No, I don't see.
I guess there's no action.
Yeah, there's no real action. It's really just to let us know that we're going to start negotiations.
Right. All right, see, there enough to listen.
There you have it.
Okay, the parking agreement.
So, received a letter on May 26th, similar to the letter that was received previously from Shyla Adluru, I hope I didn't butcher that, requesting parking spaces. They own the building at 260 High Street. I believe the letter was in your packets. They're requesting 20 parking spaces on weekdays, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 AM till 6:00 PM, at $20 per space, or $4,800 a year. The spaces would be available for public parking at all their times during the week and on weekends and holidays. I had asked Ms. Adluru to be present this evening. Just as the meeting started, I received a message that she is sick and unable to attend. She will be available to attend Monday night, hopefully, if she feels better.
Okay. Comments?
I would just like to say, there was quite a bit of lobbying that brought this proposal back to the table, and Borough Manager Flanders, President Wain, and myself, I don't know if there are others who were involved. But I'm looking forward to this going forward and being approved, and the specifics Monday night, she can, she can add to if she chooses. But I'm very excited that this is moving forward and back on the table, for its revenue quality, and also for the professional quality of services that I experienced when I visited their facility to talk to both of them. Thank you.
Well, I'd have to say there's quite a bit of lobbying in opposition to giving any particular parking spaces to any one.
They're not giving, they're paying.
Paying, assigning any parking spaces to any one company. It is a municipal lot. It should be available for all customers at all times and all companies. I am a downtown business shopper. I use that lot. If I do not park in that lot, I park in the street, which is expected of every other customer of every other business along High Street. I see no reason in a municipal lot to assign parking spaces to any one business or company.
That parking lot is always empty. It's always empty.
Whether it's empty today, and you're looking at a future, are two different things.
We can get money for that, but they should go forward. Yeah. We always complain we don't have no money, and then we don't want to get money in there. And that's empty. It will be full, I will say, maybe not, but it's always empty. And we have plenty of space for everybody to come into the downtown.
I think we need to wait for a plan before we just go ahead and assign any one parking spaces. And, you know, you say that lot is always empty. Well, there's, there are a lot of reasons why those lots are currently empty. That is not going to be the case moving forward with a, with a good parking plan. And every other business downtown, there's, why is, there is such an insistence for assigned parking space for this one business, when every other customer either feeds the kiosk or parks on the street? What is different about this business that they can't do the same that's expected of every other, every other business downtown?
Well, it's not just that, Cheryl. When this first came up, I said, you know, come back to the letter of support from Padita. Come back and say, oh, all the other businesses around here say, yeah, 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 we want to see that. I still haven't seen any kind of support from, from anyone in that area.
Has Padita come up with a decision on?
Three days this week.
President Wain canvassed the lot three particular days this week at various times, and found 10 out of 78 spaces occupied. Another time, I counted 13 out of 78 during the middle of the week. 13 out of 78 that were occupied during downtown business, open shopping hours. So, if we're doing this based on the numbers, the numbers talk. So, there's a lot of space that's available.
I think what's scary is that they want 20 spaces, but when they talked about their business, it didn't seem like they had 20 doctors. So, I mean, and I'm just being, just with the information that was provided, I don't, I can't remember the exact number. Let's say it was seven. So, you don't need 20 spaces, because how are you seeing all those clients at one time?
I visited their location as well, noted the parking lot. It was completely full. So, there is room for overflow at the current site. And the building that they're going to occupy is only the back half of the Tompkins Building, which used to be the building that's the aging and adult. And their clientele base is not coming on foot. Their clientels are coming from other areas of the region. Their clientele are financially sound, based on the type of high-end vehicles that I noticed in the parking lot. They're, they're coming for treatment. They're coming for treatment.
If they, if they have these kinds of cars, why can't they use the kiosk? Why aren't they competent enough to use the kiosk?
That's not the issue of competency. I think it's a great.
Okay. There's a time later.
Here's where I am. I'll be voting no on this on Monday. I mean.
I'll be voting no on Monday as well. There are other businesses that are coming into downtown. There's going to be a brew pub that's going to be opening in a couple months. That's going to bring a lot of activity in. The farm, I was there last Thursday, that lot was pretty full from, from 5:00 o'clock on, and there was a lot of activity coming in and out of that lot. To say, to say that that lot is not utilized during business times is, plus, I've been down to the other lot where they have, there are business on 404 East High Street, which is a private lot, and they can post it any way they want, but their signs say, you know, they're parking only, violators will be towed. They're not sharing their lot with anybody. I don't see any reason for a municipality who is owned by the taxpayers to be sharing their lot with any one particular business.
I would just like to also, thank you for that wonderful applause. I would just like to also say that I would be considering an option to Shyla, to consider connections on High, and that they would maybe enjoy the revenue. And also, that in walking around, I noticed that there is a private lot on Chestnut Street that has provided eight to 10 parking spaces for the I Create Cafe. So, clearly, there's a difference between public-private relationships and municipal. So, if that means that it creates a loss of revenue, and some other type of legal situation that could be brought up regarding the business acquisition, that will come up at a later time. And I'm guaranteeing you that it won't be positive. Thank you.
I have been observing this lot for the last two months. Normally, if I traverse Potstown, it's usually on Beach Street. But because of all the excitement for and against this situation, I started traveling east and west on High Street, and making sure that when I get near Charlotte, I take a look at that lot. And it isn't just this week that I've observed it. It's been for the last two months. That lot of 78 spaces is grossly underused during the day. It's not that this is a special occasion. It just happens to be that a business came to us, recognizing the vacancies, and asked, could they rent them under these conditions in the letter? We can limit the time. We can make it a one-year contract, use it as a prototype or an experiment to see how it goes, see if some of the other businesses would also like to rent from us under these conditions, and, and move forward in that direction. Otherwise, that lot sits almost empty most of the day.
That, that would be absurd. You don't, you don't go into a mall parking lot, or a shopping center parking lot, and find a space for a particular business that's in there. It is parking open for all customers at all times.
Yes, and we're not a mall.
For all companies. We're a municipal lot.
We are not a mall.
Owned by the taxpayers.
Well, I think what's scary is, it's one business coming and requesting this, but there's several businesses that are opposing it. So, what's going to stop them from saying, well, you pissed me off, so I'm going to move somewhere else? I mean, that's my, my thought all the time. We need to keep, you know, the businesses we have here happy.
We need to get three hours of questions.
But they're not using it.
Look at, look at the frequency.
Well, there's a time for you later on.
Let's just move on to Monday. We'll, we'll vote.
Okay. So, we will list this for Monday. 23, Bid Protest.
You have that day by speed? I thought we were about to have.
There is an appropriate time. It comes at the end if you've signed in.
Council recalls that we had a special meeting last week and discussed some issues associated with the bike lane project and a bid protest that we received. We have since confirmed that the low bidder did not follow through with the rules that were adopted by PennDOT and approved by the Borough through agreement. Specifically, the prime contractor did not submit the appropriate information or commitment to PennDOT that's required for the bidders to participate. Therefore, I would suggest that council be in a position to take formal action to deny the bid protest, which would then allow the award to go to the next lowest bidder. I think we're only, it's a large project, and I think the difference is about $8,000. We have been advised by PennDOT that, again, they would not offer the funding to the low bidder, so we really don't have a whole lot of choice with respect to this project if we wanted to go forward.
Right.
Given the time constraints, and I've been speaking with both Justin and Mark, although it's not typical, we would ask that we list this and do this action formally tonight as opposed to Monday night, so we can get the notice out. There are certain rights to appeal, and we'd rather get that clock moving sooner rather than later, given the significance of the project. And if I misspoke anything, Justin, you can correct me.
No, just a clarification on the clock. Whatever, we decide to deny the protest, that letter needs to be in the hands of the, of the Ramos and Associates by tomorrow.
Guess that means I have to write a letter.
Tonight.
Want to be clear.
Okay, that being the case, would you propose the wording for the motion?
Sure. The, the motion would be to deny and reject the bid pro, bid protest of Ramos and Associates, associated with the project number 102836, and I guess it's an ECMS project. So, that would be the action.
Okay. I'll be asking for that motion in a moment. Is there any public comment on this topic? Hearing none. I'll need this motion.
That motion?
Moved, and the second? And second. Any further discussion?
I would like to abstain from this. I would rather not.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, Harb. You have the documents, and the issues are at 1296 East Ty Street and 301 Chestnut Street. If there are no questions, we'll list that for Monday. No questions, we'll list that for Monday. 25 is Harb administratively approved for 701-703 High Street. No comments, and we'll list that. Would like to mention, we do have an add-on. And this is the zoning application. What is the address? We know it as the former Shirt Factory.
If council recalls, I believe it was last month, we had a presentation from a developer who was interested in redeveloping what we call the Shirt Fact, Shirt Factory Building and to a number of units in addition to, I guess, a two-unit twin project, and had requested some feedback from Borough Council. Literally, we just received two applications. One is a conditional use application, which would come before Borough Council. We would not be scheduling that hearing until our July meeting. If you recall, the request was by conditional use to allow apartments or condominiums on, on the first floor, which is a conditional use for existing buildings in the particular zoning district, which I believe is downtown gateway. In addition, the applicant had told us at the last month's meeting that they would need some zoning relief with respect to parking, and we have received the zoning application. And the applicant at this point, based upon what's been provided, is actually seeking two variances for the project. One is for parking. It appears that, based upon the number of units, 56 spaces would be required, and I believe they are providing 47. So they are nine spaces short of the requirement in the ordinance. In addition, there also is a requirement in our ordinance with respect to the number of single-family attached units that can be on any one block. Again, this is based upon the information they're providing. They're asking for a variance to allow two more units to be placed on this block as they proposed last month. So I think there would be a total of 14 existing single-family units on the block. They're asking for two more. Apparently, 12 already exists. So they are seeking variances from the zoning hearing board for those two items. They would also need the conditional use approval from Borough Council, which would come later. The reason we're talking about this tonight, based upon my understanding, Mr. Flanders, is that the zoning hearing board most likely will schedule this prior to our July meeting and potentially by June 29. So we just got this today. We understand you're just getting this today. I am going to reach out to the applicant to suggest it may be in their best interest to attend Monday night's meeting. They will be here Monday night. To fully explain exactly what they want. I think it seems to be consistent with what we were told at the last meeting, but I certainly don't want to speak for them, and I think they would like council's support of the, for the variances. Whether you give that or not, it's up to you, but I think it's best to have all the information before you decide how to proceed. So that's. The applicant will be here on Monday. Okay.
I, I would like to add comment. I know the property, and I know they have a parking concern, we have a concern, that they're short of spaces. And I would suggest they follow suit as the Beach Street Factory did. Beach Street Factory had a shortage of spaces, and they acquired adjacent properties and turned them into parking. I recently learned that the property on Cherry Street, immediately east and adjacent to this building, is going to be settled as an estate. So it is available for sale for them to take ownership and turn it into parking, and probably relieve their nine-space shortage. So if you can pass that on to the developer, and they can talk with the property owners before Monday, maybe we can resolve that. There are no other comments, we'll list this for, for Monday evening. Okay. The other 26 is comments from citizens present.
I do.
And rules for this are each person who has signed in is allowed three minutes to address Borough Council, and we will not be responding, but we will listen to you. Thank you.
Sheila Dooley.
As Main Street Manager, my job is not always the easiest. It does not always win friends in the business community. But along with Padita Board, we've come a long way to create a better atmosphere in the downtown. My stake as a Pottstown homeowner, business owner, and school district parent is truly the force behind my commitment. I live it every day, the good, the bad, and all that lies in between. Again, it's not so easy. It's been the reason that after much effort by my Board and myself, that we have more businesses engaged and involved in what decisions are being made in their downtown community. Parking has been an issue for many years, and it's not something our town alone struggles with. After the request was made to allow 20 spaces in the borough lot located at Charlotte and High Street for the weekday hours between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., it was made quite clear we needed to get a plan together that would help today, tomorrow, and in the long term of our downtown success. Success is not something we gain when we listen to one or two voices. Success comes when a team listens to all voices, takes the challenge of creating a fair and reasonable plan for all to benefit. Not a short-term plan to satisfy one voice. Not a plan that tells the masses they are not important enough or as important, but a plan that is well thought out and brought to the community that is affected most by it. It is rare that any community effort will gain 100% support. But Padita did get 100% support of the South Side businesses when we moved the Pottstown Farm to the other side of High Street. Padita was asked by council to be sure that all had a voice and that all plans would be considered before agreeing to move the farm to the South Side. The first night of the farm was hugely successful. I'd like to think at least partly because Padita did their job and gave a voice to all those businesses. It is our job as business community leaders to listen and take action. Whether we like the voices, opinions, or not, it is our job to make that voice heard. The decision to move the farm was the right for many reasons. Allowing 20 parking spaces to be designated to one business with signs dictating such will mean, in the long term, all of our businesses can and will suffer. To say today, lot is underutilized without having a plan in place is not a valuable conclusion. On Thursday evening during the farm, the lot is utilized, and parking begins about 4:30, an hour and a half before the business would open up their specific, their specified spaces. Wayward signage is not evident throughout the community. Many ask where to park. At the initial park meeting two weeks ago, it was evident we needed a plan. Without time to create a plan, it would be unfair to give away spaces just because someone says they want them. Prior to the initial request for these spaces, council did not reach out to any businesses or ask how they felt about the spaces being given away. If we are to move forward and create a town that people want to come visit, we must have a community of businesses who support it. Bringing this up at a last-minute agenda item does not create a warm feeling between council and businesses. Padita will always welcome our investors, those who are here now and those who we will see in the future. Welcoming and giving everything away are two very different things. Many towns have success by setting plans that help the masses. Today, a core group met to discuss a plan parking that will again benefit the majority. In the end, Padita will not ever, short-term, long-term, support the allocation of specific parking spaces for one business and eliminate future parking for our customers.
Thank you.
Adam Burke.
I didn't write anything down. I have a restaurant that's open now on High Street, and we're opening a brew pub which has 50 seats right across from that lot. So during the time that we're going to be open, 11 to, you know, 10, 12 at night, if we have 50 people in our brew pub, and we get the farmer's market to clean up their farmer's market, which I'm trying to do, now you have two businesses that are putting people in that parking lot at all, like constantly. If they open up, if they start doing things to try and change the way that they're viewed, and we change the way that we're viewed, and multiple other people come and buy up some of the buildings that are on High Street, this problem is only going to get worse and worse and worse. Right now, there's a lot of empty buildings in a lot of places that you don't need parking for. But if Ellis Mills Building comes up, if any of these other big buildings get bought up, and you need extra parking, it's, you know, are you going to tell me that when the brew pub opens, we could buy 40 spots at 20 bucks because they bought 20, 20 spots at 20 bucks? Now you don't have any spots. And, you know, for the $5,000 a year, it would cost us $10,000 a year to have 40 spots, which, which not to make somebody say, okay, I'll, I'll buy all 70 spots. And, and we want them from 12 till we close at 12. So now, now what you're doing is you're putting it in a situation where it's a bidding war, and now all these people that are here, all these downtown businesses that use that lot, even though it may not be very often, some of the people are only open Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Some of the people are only open Thursday, Friday, Saturday. You know, so what I'm saying is, if you're opening it up to anybody, it, it's going to be, it's going to get out of hand really quick, because I, I feel that the other businesses and people that I've spoke to that are way above me and have way more money than I do, if I say to them, hey, why don't you just buy all these rest of these spots? That's nothing to them. You know what I mean? And now, now you're in a bidding war, and now it's him versus her versus her versus her. Now the unity of the town is getting pulled apart instead of pushed together. And everybody's now, like, it's going to be a huge deal, I think, if you guys let this happen. But, thanks.
Thank you. Deb Penrod.
This will end your meeting on a warm and fuzzy. June 22nd is the Pottstown Historical Society 2017 Walking Tour. Hope everybody comes out and checks it out, the history of these buildings that we refer to so often. It's, it's really amazing. It's fascinating. It's a, I think it's a core of Pottstown, and we are going to be co-promoted by Farm this year, since it's on Thursday night. See you then.
Where, where are you reading for the tour?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's on the first half of the 200 block, High Street between Hanover and Penn. It's a short block.
Debbie Fox. Nope. Debbie Fox. Deb, could I get you fix this right here? Address.
The two things that stood out to me when I was listening to the people that were for this parking situation was revenue and the lot's not utilized. So that's why you think that they should get the same spots. The lot will be utilized. We have all this stuff going on, and we're going to need those spaces. And that's why it's, people want to put their businesses near that parking lot, because they're going to have parking. And the second was about the revenue. Okay, so we need money. Why are we giving a discount? Business permits are $30 a month, from what I understood. Residential permits are $55 a month, and if you have more than one car, it jumps up to 125. So we want to make bucks off this? Then make some bucks. I mean, why are we discounting it? It's a commodity, right? I mean, I'm against it, but not only should we not be giving away or selling municipal parking spots and moving the permit lot, which is what you're actually doing. The permit lot is in the far left corner where the permit people park. We don't need more permit parking. You could take the people that park at that permit lot, which is about 20 spots, and it's only usually half-full maybe, the people, their businesses are closer, that if you move them up to the front, the front, the front-left, they would be closer to their businesses, and then let them have the permit lot, which is now in the back-left, and pay $30 every spot, just like I would if I wanted to, to have a business permit. I believe it's 30 or 35. I could be wrong. Thanks.
Thank you.
Frank, I hope I got this right. Frank Rassa? Raski?
How you all doing tonight?
Frank, could you do me a favor and?
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'm kind of nervous because I'm not used to speaking in places that aren't controlled. Meaning my kitchen. I just, the things that the parking lot situation is getting talked about, I just find it fascinating that there are certain weight given to the person that wants to, or owns that property at 260. And you see the folks that are sitting here. We're all sitting here, we're all together. You've unified us, which is a wonderful thing. Under more, under normal circumstances, we probably wouldn't even talk to each other. So we have to, we have to thank you for that, because it's a true, it's just the kind of thing where like, the municipal lot, the significance of a municipal lot should be available to everybody, whether it's, you're renting it from 9 to 5, or 5 to 6, or 6 to 8, it doesn't really matter. If you're giving it to one person more than you're giving it to everybody else, you're creating a weighted situation. We all need the lot. Okay, it's empty. With all due respect, I've been looking at that lot for 15 years now, and it's been empty for 15 years. I've been waiting a lot longer for that lot to be full than most. But I'm still hopeful, and I know that Adam's opening up soon, he needs the spaces. Steel River uses that lot, a lot, and they're also great for the community. We have the salsa and the Swing Cats in the Eagles Building. They fill that lot. I mean, you know, if that lot gets used, it might be underutilized, but I don't think giving it to one person is going to solve any problem. It's just going to create a problem, because like Adam was saying, you know, he's got big-time investors backing him, he could buy the whole lot. Maybe he should buy the whole lot. Can I bring something? At $20? I want 19, 15. But it's just, it's just a kind of, I'm not, I'm sorry. You have really brought us together, which is a treat. But it, I just think, you know, I appreciate what you're trying to think about, what's good for the downtown, but honestly, if you want to know what's good for the downtown, you know, Sheila, ask her. She walks the streets, she talks to everybody. If she was supporting it, it would be a completely different thing. She's the one that is in charge of keeping the downtown straightened out. And she doesn't support it, I don't see how anybody can sit there and say, it's supported and this is what we're going to do. Doesn't matter what anybody thinks. I mean, that's why, you know, Sheila does a great job for keeping the downtown straight. And she doesn't support the plan, so there has to be something to it. Instead of just maybe a haphazard decision on Monday, maybe there needs to be some kind of ad hoc committee or something put together and straighten it out, if there's a way to straighten it out, or to, you know, to not do it at all. I mean, because making a quick decision, it might make sense today, but there might be a guy that's sitting there, you know, that's going to look at the minutes from this meeting tonight, and he's like, what are they doing over there? They're giving away parking lots? I'm not going there. I mean, the unintended circumstances that people could have with making decisions that aren't thought out are, are significant. I mean, Adam spent, I don't know how much time over the last two years trying to build that brew pub, and now you're taking half the lot from him. Because including the permit and the permit that you're suggesting, that 78-spot lot is only a 48-spot lot.
Can you, can you wrap this up?
Yeah, absolutely. That's all I have to say. It's nice to see you all, and I wish you all good health. I love you.
Thank you.
Can I, is that the last comment? Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. So in essence, what it looks like is the future and project-
Ms. Paez?
Nothing.
Mr. Arms?
Come back to me. I have to write down my thoughts. Sorry.
Mr. Proxell?
We just enjoyed the Memorial Day Parade. I think it was the first time a little boy saw a horse, at least to that size.
Ms. Cole?
I think we have to have more discussion on the parking issues. I think that would be a good thing.
Ms. Miller?
I have a couple of things. One, I want to just advocate again for the PML, because I, not to take anything away from you, Mr. Williams, I know you do a great job in Harrisburg. Our downtown would do better if we had a vision, a plan, drafted our zoning and ordinances around that vision and plan, and developed a strategic marketing plan. Currently, we are just selling to whomever wants to buy. All money is not good money. All businesses are not good businesses for a downtown revitalization. Two, I would like to thank the Reading Eagle for a very wonderful photograph that it printed for the Memorial Day Parade. I had a friend of mine, Mr. Robert Douglas, with a couple of his veteran colleagues with the Clydesdale, so it was very nice to see and appreciated. And I want to thank some of the community volunteers that don't get enough recognition in the projects that they help with, and a lot of things I engage in are pretty heavy-duty projects and they require a lot of manpower. So I want to thank some of the people in the community that help me without asking questions. They don't say why, they say, what do you need and what time do you want me there? So Councilman Ryan Proxell, Charlie Pierce, Bob Orr, Brandon Towson, Brian Kish, and Brian Marquette, thank you very much for all the community service that you provide.
Thank you. Mr. Arms?
I just want to shout out Marcia, Levagood, and Chip for getting Budweiser Clydesdales for the Memorial Day Parade. I mean, it brought a lot of people out downtown. I mean, the weather wasn't great, but still, I mean, where I sat, it was packed. I want to thank all the businesses for coming out to discuss the parking lot situation. I was at the first farm last week. It was very nicely attended, thanks to Sheila and the Farm Committee. And regarding the PML membership, I'm with Mayor Thomas. I think we need to just get rid of all these memberships. I mean, let's save some money. Oh, and one other thing. I sent two emails to council president and vice president requesting executive session to discuss the personnel issue on April 12 and May 15, and I'm hoping we can eventually do that.
Very good. Anything else, Madam Mayor?
Surely. On item number 23, I'd just like to draw the councilor's eyes to consider the fiscal impacts that are inherent in what's happening with item number three, and to note that $8,000 was actually the initial gap at the beginning of this process, which mutes out the $8,000 that we're trying to put on the table to spend. So in our endeavors to always be fiscal responsible, we have to consider the numbers. And in considering the numbers as well, a lot of the people who are visiting the downtown on a regular basis are not paying the kiosk for eight to 10 hours. They're paying the kiosk for minutes to be downtown. And if we need to, we could pull those statistics to bring them to relevancy as needed. But I do believe that in the long term, that multi-tiered parking is going to have to be the way to go for the downtown, especially with residential and special events. And that's one of the things that does happen in cities. And also, the parking tickets are much more expensive. And also, the key, I think in Norris Town, you can't park as inexpensively as you can in Pottstown. So all of those things will change with the changing dynamic, and that's the future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I would like to take this time to say thanks to a number of people and organizations that have been doing very good things. And I'll start with our own counselor call. I do want to thank you for suggesting, organizing, and whatever other parts you played in the investors' reception. It was wonderful. And by the way, Polly says she's still admiring the centerpieces you provided. Two, if you've read The Mercury recently, they had their first graduates of Pottstown Works at the Salvation Army. If you haven't, I encourage you to go back, get a copy. Maybe it was in today's or yesterday's paper, but there's a wonderful program at the Salvation Army led by the former editor of The Mercury, Nancy March. They now have their first group of graduates, and I think this is a wonderful program to increase employment in the area. I know it's Borough Council's endeavor to bring more businesses. They're going to help provide more employees. And third, I want to mention again, Dr. Rodriguez, the superintendent of the Pottstown Schools, I want to commend him for having the affair, the fair school funding affair, and educating the public of why this town is in the financial dilemma it is. And that being the case, I thank you all for coming out, meeting adjourned.